Good evening. Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Thursday, January 4, 2024. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2023 through January 2024. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 17, 2023. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 13, 2023 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and the Times and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January 17, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representative, after the applicant's representatives have finished their their presentations and have been questioned by the Planning Board members and staff. Sorry. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raised hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen or participating by phone by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We will have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. The first order of business will be the oath of office. Mr. Mueller?
Yeah. The way I'm going to handle it is actually nine of the 11 members of the board have to be sworn in because they've been reappointed. There's a couple of new members. Somebody in that has been changed from an alternate to a class four member. So I'm going, we're going to start with David and I'm going to go through the list. And what you should do, starting with David, is to read the oath of office that was distributed by Kerry. Everybody has it?
No. I do not.
Jack, you do not? Okay, when we get to you, I'll read it and then you'll just follow along. The only two people who I'm not going to swear in are Louise and Alvin because their terms have not ended. Okay, David, if you can start and when you get to the second from the last line where it says Princeton Planning Board, that would be, you would add class one member. Okay, if you can raise your hand, right hand and read the oath of office.
I, David Cohen, sincerely profess and swear that I do and will bear true faith and allegiance to the government established in this state under the authority of the people.
And then this morning?
I just had to scroll down, sorry.
I'm sorry, sorry.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Office of Princeton Planning Board. Class one?
Last one.
Yes, member.
Okay.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
So sworn, congratulations. Next will be Julie. And Julie, when you get to that point, after Princeton Planning Board, you are a class two member. So if you could raise your right hand and read the oath of office. Is that your right hand?
Yeah. Well, actually, this is, I mean, it looked like this for David, but this is my right hand.
Yeah.
Okay. I, Julie Capizoli, sincerely profess and affirm that I do and will bear true faith and allegiance to the government established in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all duties of the Office of Planning Board, Princeton Planning Board Class Two, according to the best of my ability and understanding. So help me God.
So affirmed. Congratulations. And for the remainder members of the board who are going to read the oath of office, note that Julie in the first and second paragraph used affirm rather than swear, which is perfectly appropriate if you're more comfortable doing that. Okay, next would be Mia. And Mia, you'd be a class three member as well. I'm sorry, it's class two member. Oh, class three.
Class three.
Class three, yeah.
I, Ms. Sax, sincerely profess and affirm that I do and will bear true faith and allegiance to the government established in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Office of Class Three in the Princeton.
Class three member.
Princeton Planning Board Class Three Member, according to the best of my ability and understanding. So help me God.
So sworn and affirmed. Congratulations. Next will be Nat, who's been moved up from an alternate. And that, Nat, when you get to Princeton Planning Board, it would be class four member. If you could raise your right hand? And if you could read the oath of office?
I, Nat Bodigheimer, sincerely profess and swear that I do and will bear true faith and allegiance to the government established in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Office of Planning Board Member Class Four, according to the best of my ability and understanding.
So sworn, congratulations. Next will be Pallavi Nuka? Is he here?
She.
She. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, she.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand and you have the oath of office also?
Yes.
Okay, if you could read it and then you will be a class four member also, when you get to that Princeton Planning Board, you would say class four member. If you could raise your right hand?
I, Pallavi Nuka, sincerely profess and swear that I do and will bear true faith and allegiance to the government established in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Office of Princeton Planning Board Member Class Four, according to the best of my ability and understanding.
So sworn, congratulations. And I'm sorry I said he rather than she. For some odd reason on this program, I never see the visual image of anybody until they speak. So I didn't.
It's okay. I don't see gender at all.
I guess I don't. I guess I don't either. Okay. Next will be Owen. And Owen, that'll be again a class four member. If you could raise your right hand?
It is raised?
Yep.
I, Owen O'Donnell, sincerely profess and swear that I do and will bear true faith and allegiance to the government established in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Office of Princeton Planning Board Class Four Member, according to the best of my ability and understanding.
So sworn, congratulations.
Thank you.
Next will be Freddie Perlmutter. And I'm not sure whether that would be she, I assume? Yes, okay. And you've raised your right hand. If you could read the oath of office, please.
What class, please?
Class four.
Okay. I, Freddie Perlmutter, sincerely profess and swear that I do and will bear true faith and allegiance to the government established in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Office of Princeton Planning Board Class Four Member, according to the best of my ability and understanding.
So sworn, congratulations. Next, next will be Jack. Jack, I will read the sentence and then you'll just repeat it as we go through it, okay? You can raise your right hand. I, I guess it's John.
I, John D. Taylor.
Sincerely profess and swear.
Sincerely profess and swear.
That I do and will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I do and will bear full faith and allegiance.
To the government established in this state.
To the government established in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
That I will faithfully, partially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of the Office of.
Perform all the duties of the Office of.
Princeton Planning Board alternate member.
Princeton Planning Board Alternate Member.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
So sworn and congratulations. Our last will be Claudia Wilson Anderson. Okay, and Claudia, you'll be, when you get to that Princeton Planning Board Member, you'll be alternate two. So if you could read the oath of office, please?
Claudia Wilson Anderson, sincerely profess and swear that I do and will bear true faith and allegiance to the government established in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Office of Princeton Planning Board Class Four Member, according to the best of my ability.
It will actually.
Class four, I'm sorry, class four alternate member.
Yeah, it's just alternate.
According to the best.
Okay.
Alternate two.
Yep.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
So sworn, congratulations. Okay, we now sworn everybody in. It has to be sworn in. And the next business, I guess, is the.
A roll call?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Bodigheimer?
Yeah.
Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Nuka?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Here.
And Ms. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. And Kerry, what do you have next on the agenda?
After that, we have nominations. Nominations. So we need a nomination report from our nominating committee, please.
Right. Julie Capizoli, I'm the clerk of the nominating committee and Alvin McGowan and Tim Quinn and myself gathered via email. And Alvin, did you want to tell everyone the results of our nomination? Drum roll, please.
Ah. If I remember correctly, they were Louise Wilson as chairman and Owen O'Donnell as vice chairman.
Thank you.
Think that was it.
That's perfect.
And do I hear any other nominations? Okay, let's have a roll call vote first on chair and then on vice chair. And it'll be obviously, the only nominee is Ms. Wilson.
Mr. Bodigheimer?
Aye.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Nuka? Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Louise abstains from this vote, right?
No, although, yes.
She doesn't have to.
Okay. And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes. Sorry. I mean, I'm I'm not expected to abstain, am I, Jerry? I don't, I don't mean to do anything inappropriate.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Reorg is so much fun. Okay.
Okay, congratulations. Louise?
Excuse me, I think that we missed Ms. Pearl Mutter.
Oh, I voted.
She's fine.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I voted yes.
Okay.
But I'll do it again.
And now we have only one nominee for vice chair and I'll ask again if there are any other nominations. Okay, why don't we have a roll call on the nomination of Owen as vice chair?
Mr. Bodigheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. And Louise, want to take over at this point? And just for the new members, the only time I play this active role at the beginning on this organizational stuff is at the organizational meeting because we, obviously, we had to swear people in. There was no one who could do it other than me at that point. And there was no one to run the meeting until we had elected Louise as chair. She could have actually handled it for vice chair, but I didn't think of it. But Louise, want to take over?
Sure. Thanks, Jerry, and thank you, everybody. I really do appreciate the vote of confidence and I'm really looking forward to the year. So let's move on to the appointment of Planning Board Attorney. We have a resolution appointing Mueller and Bailey, Jerry Mueller's firm for Planning Board Attorney. If there are no questions, would someone like to move that?
So moved.
Moved. Oh, well, I moved by Mr. McGowan because I heard him first and I saw David's hand as well. So moved by Mr. McGowan, seconded by David Cohen. Let's do these by roll call vote, too.
Mr. Bodigheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes. Um, I just want to let board members know. I don't think that the qualifications for the attorneys that we're appointing tonight via these resolutions were circulated ahead of time. If you'd like to see them, they can be provided to you. They were, of course, circulated before the first times that we appointed or reappointed these, these individuals and firms. But like I said, if you would like to know more about the firms or the individual attorneys, don't hesitate to ask Mr. Lesko or or Kerry and and they can provide that information to you. So next up, we have appointment of special counsel. This is a conflict counsel in the event that Mr. Mueller or his partner, or I guess, and his partner, Martina Bailey, have a conflict and the individual attorney we work, would work with is named Steve Goodell. The firm is Parker McKay. So is there any questions and if not, a motion and second?
I'll move to appoint Parker McKay as special counsel.
Thanks, Mr. O'Donnell. Is there a second?
A second.
Thanks, Ms. Capizoli. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bodigheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next up, we have appointment of redevelopment council. This again is for applications that come to us under the the New Jersey Housing and Redevelopment Law, I think it is.
Yeah, right.
That's the correct name. The firm is Marazidi Falcon and the attorney that we work with is Joe Marazidi. Is there a motion and a second on this?
I'll move.
Thanks, Ms. Capizoli and Mr. Cohen, seconds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bodigheimer?
Yep.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Next, we have appointment of our Planning Board Secretary, that is Kerry Phillip. And for those of you who don't know her yet, she's the point person for lots and lots of things. And now she's just made herself visible on the screen. Is there a motion and a second on this resolution?
I'll move it.
Thanks, Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bodigheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And next, we have resolutions about special meetings and the 2024 meetings calendar, which actually is next month, February 2024 through January of 2025. Do I have a motion and second on these?
So moved.
Thanks, Mr. McGowan.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bodigheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, okay.
And Kerry, I'm Louise, I'm sorry. What about the other professional consultants? Dan Dobremilsky, Joe Scoopian, Victor Anisiky?
That's all done by resolution through the Engineering Office.
Oh, okay.
And the council works with the Engineering Office on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I noticed that we designated Joe Scoopian's firm last night. I didn't see the other ones, but I'm sure they'll be coming to us in.
Well, according to our new finance coordinator down there, if there's amounts under, under a certain amount, she doesn't have to present it to council. She does the paperwork there and I believe all of the consultants fall in that category. So you can check with Sarah or I can check with Sarah.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Good. Thanks for raising that, Mr. Mueller, because that, that's good to know. Announcements. Well, first, I want to again thank the board. I'll jump in and make announcements of my own. I really do appreciate the the privilege to serve as chair again and I want to congratulate Owen O'Donnell. He's got big shoes to fill with Tim's, Tim Quinn's departure. And but have a lot, whole lot of confidence and I know Owen and I will work together really well and closely and our first order of business will be to meet sometime very soon and talk about subcommittees. So we'll, we'll be deciding who's on which subcommittees and getting, getting that subcommittee roster circulated in the next few weeks, for sure. But you should assume that there probably will not be, and Justin or Kerry, correct me if I'm wrong about this, but there would not be subcommittee meetings in January. Those meetings will be scheduled starting in February? Is that safe to assume?
Yes, Madam Chair. Basically, there's, there's nothing pressing that we have to do them. You know, we have to speed up the process. So there's a little bit of time where we can appoint them at the next meeting and then still be able to have, you know, whatever landscape or minor site plan committee meetings after that.
Yeah, I don't want to hold anything up, obviously, but yeah, okay.
And if I can just jump in, I believe that the the bylaws have been distributed to all the members and that the subcommittees are all outlined in the bylaws. So if you have any particular suggestions for where you'd like to serve, please send a message to Louise and myself and I think we'll take every consideration into into our thought process on that.
Great. Actually, you could certainly notify Owen, Owen or me. It would also be good to let Kerry know because she can keep track of who's interested in what. I would note that the at least some of the descriptions of committees in the Rules and Regulations document, which we refer to informally as the bylaws, which can be really confusing, are not accurate because we don't have the site plan committee in there, I don't, I don't think. And we do have the subdivision committee, which has not met in years. So it could be somewhat confusing. And if, if you have questions about about that, please don't hesitate to, to raise them with Justin or Kerry. And those, those rules and regulations are being updated and Justin, maybe you can talk just a little bit about that process and how you expect it to, you know, proceed from here on out. Justin and Tim and I spent a fair amount of time and Owen looking at the existing rules and regulations with an eye toward the common sense updates that need to be made. They haven't been made. Hasn't been updated since 2013 and before she retired from the board, Gail Ullman gave me some notes about what she, which was some years ago, gave me some notes on things that that she and others felt needed to be updated. And of course, there have been others ideas for updating that have emerged even since then.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm happy to jump in. Basically, this isn't some sort of huge overhaul, but really just updating things that have come up in the 10 years or so since the bylaws or rules and regulations were last updated. We began to look into it like Louise said, with Louise and Tim last year. Met sporadically or once or twice, but you know, exchanged emails and things like that. And then once we have kind of a draft document or at least a footnoted document, then we could bring that to, well, we'll need Jerry to review it because there were some questions that we said. You know, this seems like a legal question we need to ask the attorney, which way we should go with this. And then obviously, there's a procedures committee that will be involved before bringing it fully back to the board. So it's nothing that we have to do or have any, you know, there's no glaring thing that we need to fix or there's, you know, timelines to get something done by. It's just, you know, something we're reviewing after 10 years and we'll continue to do, to do that as we do everything else. Just to kind of update that. So no huge rush, but also, you know, it's probably time to update them.
Yeah, it needs to get done and and when we are ready to bring it to the board, I think, you know, there will be a cover memo of some kind that points out, you know, here are, along with a redlined version that, that points out what is being recommended for, for updating. I can see, the only other announcement. I guess the, the only other announcement I, I have relates to the agenda tonight. I think, um, we're going to rearrange things a little bit when we get to the applications section, um, in order to take the items B and C before item A. Uh, the trustees of Princeton looking for, um, relief of conditions should, should be, uh, very quick work, although I'm not trying to shut down questions or anything. Um, Mr. Um, Lesko and Mr. Weisman will be able to answer any questions folks have, but it should be, um, pretty quick, and then we can let the folks from Princeton and, and all of their, um, experts and et cetera, um, go while we uh, move on to the, to the other application. Mr. Bodenheimer?
I just want to note that I'll be, uh, need to be recused for the university items.
Thank you, and
And Louise, I had
I think I remember that, um, Ms. Nuka, are you also recused from university?
I will also need to recuse myself.
Okay. Um, thank you. Mr. Mueller?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with an email, I think it was Justin sent out the other day, about the retreat we have, uh, every year, and Louise, you can certainly explain to the new board members what that's, that's all about, and saying if anybody has any thoughts as to what they would like to add to the agenda, let him know, and I just wanted to underscore that point.
A perfect segue to announcement about a, a retreat, which I, I think Justin was going to handle. Perfect. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Lesko.
Yeah, yeah. No, well said, Jerry. Um, we've had a planning board retreat these past couple of years, and I think it's been very helpful. We were looking, uh, potentially at a Saturday towards the end of this month or the beginning of February. Uh, I could send out an email after, um, possibly the 27th, 3rd of, uh, February or 10th of February. Last time we did it, it was, uh, roughly 10 to 2, I believe, or 9 to 1, something like that. So we would keep it a similar timeframe, uh, that includes lunch, um, so.
Except for, except for the consultants, but all the board members get lunch.
You, you got it last year, Jerry. We're still looking to get paid back for that, so. But, uh, so, uh, like Jerry said, um, really, the, the best way of doing this uh, is to hear the topics that you all want to hear and then make the agenda around that. Uh, we've already got some comments from, uh, Jack and Owen that have been super helpful, and even looking back last year, I think I got some comments from Jack. Then I looked at the agenda and it, it segued right into it, so. Um, if there are any questions or comments, uh, or, or just topics that you'd like us to cover, um, even if, you know, i- if it involves bringing in other staff members that you think would be helpful or anything like that, uh, we could certainly, uh, add those to the agenda.
Yeah, and I just want to point out, thanks, Justin, um, point out, uh, that the retreat, although of course there is an agenda and specific things we want to cover, um, it's an opportunity to get together face to face, and there's a lot of Q and A. So, um, so I would not expect, you know, brand new members to have a long list of things they want to go over. I mean, maybe you do, but maybe it's like, well, but I know what you want to go. So, um, I just want to assure, you know, everyone that, that Q and A is a really important part of the retreat, and, um, and, you know, sometimes certain things take longer or shorter than we think they uh, might take just because of there being questions or not, so. Other announcements? Okay, seeing none, let's, um, move on to subcommittee reports. I believe Site Plan Committee met since we last convened. Is that right, Ms. Capizoli?
That's correct. So, um, David Cohen and I met on December 20th. Um, and we determined that, uh, 246 Nassau Street was in, in fact, a minor site, so we will hear that later tonight.
Okay, great. Minutes, we have five sets of minutes.
Actually, I only distributed one set. The other four are being carried to our next agenda. My apologies.
My mistake. I wondered whether you had circulated them so long ago. See them. So the ones that we have are, um,
October 5th?
Yeah, okay, so.
And those, those members present this evening who were at that meeting are Mr. Bodikheimer, Ms. Capizoli, Mr. Cohen, Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, Ms. Sacks, and yourself, Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, great. So minutes of October 5th, this was a regular meeting, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to move them. I, I did have one small revision for, um, Carrie. Uh, the very last page, it had to do with the comment that I made about, um, having it not make sense to have two fences right next to each other. There's, there's one fence on an existing neighbor's property, and, uh, there was a waiver, I guess, or a variance to not put another fence right next to that. Uh, the way that it read in the minutes, it sounded like, uh, I thought it was crazy to have to put two fences on on a property owner's property, and there are many cases where it would make sense to put two fences on, so I wanted to make that change. But other than that, I thought they were fine, and I'm happy to move them. Well, if I could jump in on that, um, Carrie, I, I had actually marked that up to reflect
Yes.
David's comment, and, and you, you picked that up, but that didn't make it in that, into the final version?
What I distributed was a few days ago. Your comment was received yesterday, so I had it, or the day before, but it was just received, and, uh, everything, I already put it in the set of minutes, my document, but I'm sorry, I did not redistribute.
Yeah, do, do you want to read that to, to David, or I could read?
I don't, I'm working from home. I don't have it in front of me. I can read to show you, I could, do you want to carry it?
No, I don't think
No. Mr. Mueller, why don't you read?
Yeah, uh, this is, um, the second full paragraph, uh, on page eight, it starts, Mr. Cohen. Second sentence, "He does not think anyone should have to put" a, I, I changed it to a fence on his or her property, immediate, or, or their property, immediately adjacent to a fence on a neighboring, uh, neighboring property that is already providing the required buffer. Is that okay, David? That's perfect. Okay.
Okay, so David moves the minutes as amended. Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Thanks, thanks, Julie. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Right, thanks. Next up, we have Trustees of Princeton University Health Services Building. This is a relief of condition. It's file number P 2321 dash 020 R C. Mr. Weisman or Mr. Lesko, do you want to start or?
Let, let me, let me start by saying proof of publication and service are in order, but may I make a suggestion, Madam Chair? Basically, university health services, what the university is seeking by way of relief, is really identical for Schmidt Hall. The, the conditions they want modified is, is reworded differently slightly, but rather than having the university go, go through testimony that's going to be deuterite by the time they get to the second one, and we'll be hearing it for the second one, I suggest we hear both together. That's pretty unusual, but you can do it, and that's my recommendation.
Okay, that, that makes sense. I appreciate that. Appreciate the nod to efficiency.
I love that idea.
Especially when it makes so much sense.
Yeah. And, and proof of publication and service for the Schmidt Hall, uh, application is also, um, uh, proper. And the board, and the board has jurisdiction over that as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Lesko, do you or Mr. Weisman have anything to say before I turn to Mr. DeGrazia?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll be very brief, uh, before passing the baton.
And just, if you're going to raise your hand.
And just for the And Mr. Weisman as well at the same time, okay, because I know he'll
Just for the information, new board members, we always sw- swear in, uh, everybody who testifies, and that includes our own staff and members of the public as well, whenever it's a formal application, uh, and that would include applications for development and master plan application. Uh, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give to be the truth?
I do.
So it's one or affirmed.
Thank you. Um, I, I don't have much to say. I'll pass it over to Dan. I know he could explain it a lot better. Um, but essentially, these two applications were, uh, Princeton University Site Plan Applications that were approved in, in recent years, uh, 2021 and 2022, I believe, or at least that's when they were submitted. Um, and they're looking to, uh, to change one of the conditions in the findings of fact. Um, Dan will explain all that and why, um, under our ordinance, though, uh, the applicant has to come back to the board, uh, and uh, do this publicly and notice as they normally would, so that's why we're here tonight. Uh, and with that being said, um, Dan, if you want to talk about the, the cases themselves.
Sure. Thank you, Justin. Good evening, everybody. Just, uh, it, the, both developments utilize the same stormwater management system. It's a subsurface detention basin that was approved with the application. Uh, that basin does not meet the green infrastructure standards of our stormwater control ordinance. Existing soil conditions don't promote infi- infiltration, therefore, it's, it's not green infrastructure. Um, one thing that is different, the, the difference in the resolution of the two applications, the Schmidt Hall application did explicitly, uh, grant a design waiver from the green infrastructure standards. The Health Services application did not. But the, the point of clarification i- is just that the design waiver would need, you know, is no longer required for the Schmidt Hall application. Um, but, uh, since it's not in the Health Services one, um, it's kind of a moot point. Um, but with a design waiver to be granted from the green infrastructure standards, a mitigation plan must be approved, which is in accordance with DEP regulations. Um, each of the applications included a condition uh, with the site plan approval that required the applicant to work with staff on the details of that mitigation. And those conditions are what the applicant is looking to have removed. The applicant's developed a campus-wide stormwater mitigation plan. Uh, that mitigation plan is essentially a bank. It includes additional small-scale stormwater management systems on four of its recent site developments. We're working with the university to, uh, fully vet other projects that also include small-scale stormwater management that hasn't been accounted for, um, to essentially understand what, what the entirety of this, this mitigation bank is. Um, both of these developments used a portion of that bank for, uh, the mitigation plans. After the granting of the waivers and before the stormwater basin was constructed, the applicant undertook soil testing, confirmed that the existing conditions actually do have acceptable infiltration rates. Uh, these rates now permit the detention basins to be considered subsurface infiltration basins, which are green infrastructure. Um, as such, the design waiver is no longer needed for the Schmidt Hall project, and a mitigation plan is no longer needed for both developments. The portion of the mitigation banks that were occupied by the Health Services and Schmidt Hall projects go back into the bank. Uh, it's hard to find another way to say it, but essentially, they're getting that credit back in the bank. Um, so in case there were a future development that had a similar condition where they would need a design waiver, um, they, they would be able to pull from, from that bank. Um, it's worth noting that there are no physical changes, uh, proposed or required for the removal of the design waiver or, or the conditions. Um, the system, it, it still stays the same as it was designed. The revised stormwater reports, uh, have been reviewed by the stormwater consultant, who I don't believe is in attendance tonight, um, but he also, uh, confirmed the same. Uh, and I am available if there are any questions.
Oh, and, and Dan, I, I should have sworn you in. I didn't. If you could raise your right hand.
You did, actually.
With Justin as well.
Oh, you did? Okay, same time. Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just have a question, and maybe it's better for the university's professionals than for you, Dan, but I'm curious why it wouldn't change the design if you had an underground storage system before that was not going to infiltrate? It must have had some mechanism for discharging water at a, at a certain time. I would think that would change if the soil is permeable enough for infiltration to occur. So can you say a couple more words about why no design change was needed?
Absolutely. There's a retention requirement, uh, that our stormwater management system has, uh, it's required to retain, uh, uh, the water quality storm. Um, the outlet structures that were used for the stormwater management system retain that, uh, whether it was green infrastructure or not. Um, so now that it infiltrates, it, in theory, it's going to retain more than the water quality storm, but that retention of the water quality storm is a minimum.
Okay, so that there was discharge current, the previously, probably that discharge won't be needed as much, because the water will soak into the ground more than was expected.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Any other questions for Mr. Weisman before we welcome Mr. DeGrazia? Welcome, Mr. DeGrazia. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. So, uh, I think Mark Gabriel is in the, oh, did he get moved over? No, if you can move him over, that'd be great. Okay. So just, uh, uh, David, the way I understand it, um, when we're talking about the system, we had always designed the system with a, um, an open bottom. And we expected, because we thought it was a great design, we expected some infiltration. However, the way I understand is the rate didn't qualify it under the DEP regs as green infrastructure. It was a great design. You know, we're proud of it, um, but now, based on our additional testing, it shows that it does meet that infiltration rate, so we went from essentially, um, detention basin to infiltration basin. And I, I, you know, honestly, I, I think you, your consultants testified as to what we needed to talk about tonight. We're here just to cor- cor- correct the record. Um, we're asking just to acknowledge that, to the extent a waiver or variance was requested, we no longer need it based on the information, and just to clean it up so that, um, you know, municipality doesn't have to report to DEP the granting of a variance or waiver, um, and we don't have to pull from our mitigation bank. It's, it's that simple. It's just updating the resolutions to reflect the current records. I have Mark Gabriel here, our stormwater management, um, engineer. Um, Mark, I don't know if you have anything particularly to say or, or want to comment on what we've, we've heard Dan go into great detail already. Um, so I'll, I'll present him here for questions. If, unless, you know, if somebody wants us to go into a little more detail of something, but it's as straightforward as it gets.
Mark, um, let me swear you in in case there are any questions, or you want to make any comments. Are you here?
I'm, I'm here. Okay. Sorry about that. You can't see me, I'll say something.
Yeah, you have to speak before, I didn't, what, audit you with, with my computer. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give to be the truth?
I do.
So it's one or affirmed. And please say your full name for the record, spell your last name.
My name is Mark Gabriel, G A B R I E L.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Happy New Year, everybody, and happy, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah. Just since you took the trouble to come tonight.
Sure.
Um, I'm just curious if, if this is the ordinary sequence where you do the infiltration tests. You know, when you're, you're getting to the construction phase, as opposed during the design phase, I, I would have thought there might have been infiltration test on before you brought the application, and this wouldn't have been necessary, but you want to comment on that?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, Mr. Cohen. Um, yeah, typically, you're right. We, we do some infiltration testing during the design phase and be able to show that. We have some historic information, the area that that showed that we might be able to get this infiltration, but unfortunately, you know, it was in other planned areas where the system was being considered. Um, and then when it came down to it, you know, we just didn't have the testing where the exact system needed to be, where the exact elevation needed to be. Uh, and if you recall, the system's in a pretty, um, uh, popular area that students congregate. Uh, and now that we've started, um, some of you know about the GeoExchange project that's going on over there. Now that we started to work over there, it gave us the opportunity to dig these pretty large holes to do this, um, testing, uh, without, without really interrupting what's going on there with the students. So yes, ideally, it would have been great to have this during the design period. It just happened the timing worked out this way.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Great. Uh, any other questions for Mr. Gabriel? Okay, um, so uh, I guess uh I guess uh we take public comment on these, right? This is a, okay, so um with with no further questions from the board, I'll open the meeting for public comment. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak to the board about this, um now is the time to virtually raise your hand so that you can be brought over as a participant and speak your mind. I'm not seeing any hands go up. So um that I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting and ask Mr. Muller, um so we'll take one vote on these um and but you will revise two resolutions or two findings of fact? Is that is that what happens as a as a result of the vote?
Yeah, uh I I I think I can do it as one, and it it just makes it you know, that simpler rather than just repeating basically the same, the second resolution.
Okay, all right.
And I'll indicate in the resolution, you know, where the differences are, and there aren't many.
So the motion um we're looking for uh is um is to a- approve, I mean, I I don't mean to, well, to approve two separate reliefs of condition? Is that the sorry to ask you to hold my hand through this, but because it's unusual, I want you to, I I guess I want you to frame the motion that somebody can make because it's not so straightforward.
Approve the amended site plan, uh major site plan application um by eliminating the uh the design waiver for Schmidt Hall with respect to to mitigation and infiltration and the conditions, uh it would be condition thirteen C um for health services and condition um
Eighteen B.
Eighteen B, right, for um Schmidt Hall, and I could read those conditions if the board members would like them. But it ba- they basically just say um the university is to work with staff on a mitigation, on a campus-wide mitigation plan.
Okay.
And that's it, really.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
I would move that we grant the requested relief.
Thank you. And is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Roll call, please, Ms. Philip.
Yes, Mr. Bodenheimer? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter? Ms. Pearl Mutter?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank thank you very much. We appreciate it. We also appreciate the the shift in the agenda. Thank you.
You're welcome. See you soon, probably.
Probably.
Take care.
Good night.
Next up, we have uh an application from George and Emily Russo's Family Trust LLC. This is a minor site plan with variance at two four six Nassau Street, block thirty point zero two, lot eighty-one. This is file number P twenty-three twenty-three dash three-eight-one P M. Mr. Lesko?
No. Madam Chair, approved publication services are in order. The board has jurisdiction.
Thanks, Mr. Muller.
Yep.
Uh Jerry, would you like to swear me in for this case as well?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, I do.
So swear.
Thank you. Um and Mr. Bodenheimer can be brought back if he's still here. Uh I don't know if he left. Uh but this is not a university application. Um with that being said, I will uh just get started with a brief uh background at the beginning uh based on my memo from December thirty-first and then hand it over to the applicant and their attorney, Mr. Nadell. Um the application before you, like the chair said, is uh a minor site development application uh with a variance uh uh request. Um like Ms. Capizoli said earlier on, this application was heard by the Minor Site Plan Committee, and they agreed uh to classify as the applicant uh submitted the application as a minor site plan. Um so I'm going to share my screen uh and Jerry, I don't know if we need to make this a uh uh an exhibit, but this is a Google image, uh Google street view.
Yeah, let's mark that virtually as exhibit uh PB one.
Okay, thank you. And it's dated July twenty twenty-three. Um the building in front of you, unfortunately, it's behind this tree, like some sort of uh, I don't know, surrealist painting or something like that. Um but I I assure you the building is there. Um it is a, this is two forty-six Nassau Street. Um it's a three-story building with a storefront at on the first floor. Uh it's most recently occupied, uh I believe, by Arlie's Raw Blend, which moved to uh Witherspoon Street um with residences on the second and third floor. Um you'll see to the right of it is the IVN Bar and Restaurant. Uh to the left, uh there are other restaurants, and generally, there are commercial uses in this area um of Nassau Street. Uh many with uh many of them are mixed-use buildings, like two of them you see here with residential uh units above. The subject parcel and the neighboring ones are in the Neighborhood Business NB zoning district. Um the subject parcels are also in AHL one, though this application does not utilize that overlay. Um the uh parcel is not located in any designated local, state, or national historic districts, uh though the King's Highway uh historic district on the state and national registers uh runs on Route twenty-seven or Nassau Street uh throughout Princeton. Um the Historic Preservation Office uh reviewed the application and requested the vent piping that you'll see in a minute be painted to match the color of the existing building. Uh I'll allow the applicant to to describe more of what they're looking to do, but just generally, uh the application is to install a new rooftop exhaust fan and exterior vent piping on this uh eastern side or ivy inside, if you'd like, um of the building uh to allow for a new food service use that uh you know, they'll be cooking more than the raw juice plate cooked uh if they did at all. So uh with that being said, I just had a few minor comments that I'm happy to get into uh if the applicant um doesn't uh address them. Um I know Mr. Weissman and Mr. Bridger are here as well. And I'm also here for any questions you might have.
So Dan Weissman and Derek Bridger, is there anything that you would like to add to Mr. Lesko's comments?
No, if you have any question.
Can I, can I just ask Derek to reflect a little bit on? I know it was peculiar to me that this was actually a front yard variance rather than a side yard variance, and maybe, Derek, you could explain why that is.
Sure, David. Thank you.
Derek, if you could raise your right hand.
Yeah.
Swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth? So swear.
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir.
Uh so it's based on the definition of a front yard, which is uh the area setback, the distance of the front yard setback from the front property line along the street. So that's the front yard that runs parallel, and then after that period along the sides, your side yards would run to the rear yard, which is basically set up the same way as the front yard. So while this appears to be in the side yard, it isn't visually in the side yard, it's technically in the zoning front yard, and that's the setback variance that they need tonight.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for staff? Any other, anything to add, Mr. Weissman? I guess not, or you would have, okay. So representing the applicant, we have Mr. Nadell. Is that correct?
Good evening. Yes, it's nice to see everyone. Happy New Year.
Same to you.
So I am uh in our Princeton office now uh with the applicants, uh George, Emily, and their daughter Anastasia. Uh Mr. Citron is uh here as well. Um I had a a nice intro prepared, but I think Mr. Lesko basically summed everything up. Uh but uh just I guess for the record, uh Ben Nadell from the attorney uh with Saul Ewing, I uh represent the George and Emily Russo's Family Limited Partnership. Uh the block is thirty point zero two, lot eighty-one, and the property is improved with a two-and-a-half-story masonry building uh with a first-floor storefront, which was most recently occupied by Arlie's Raw Blend, as some of you may remember. Uh there are residential units on the second and third floors. Uh as Mr. Lesko said, the property's in the Neighborhood Business zoning district. Uh this is a minor site plan application for um a a minor improvement. Uh the applicant seeking to install an exhaust fan on the roof of the building with an exterior vent pipe along the easterly side of the building. Um that is the entirety of the application. Uh there there's no signage being proposed with this application. We are seeking a bulk variance this evening uh for the front yard setback. Uh we will discuss that momentarily. Uh just uh side note, the pipe will encroach onto the neighboring property. That's the IVN. Uh the applicant has already secured an easement from the adjacent property owner. Uh this easement was submitted to the planning board as part of the application. Um should the board grant an approval this evening uh upon the review and approval of the easement by Mr. Muller, uh the applicant will agree to record the easement uh with the county clerk.
Great.
Also here this evening uh is our one witness, uh Kevin Wilks. Mr. Wilks is our architect. We might have to move him over uh so that he can testify this evening. I'm not sure if you he's uh he's at Princeton Design Guild tonight on the Zoom meeting.
Yes, so um yeah, we should definitely bring him over in case there are questions for him. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Carrie. Uh and just some minor housekeeping items. Uh we did receive the staff report that's dated December thirty-first uh along with the engineering and zoning report uh which is dated December eighth. Uh we are prepared to address those comments this evening. So with that, um we can qualify uh Kevin. I know he's appeared before this board many times, but uh Mr. Muller, if you'd like to qualify him, we may do so.
Yeah, good. Um Ben, you 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 can, you you go ahead and qualify him.
Sure. Kevin, can you please state your uh name and business address for the record?
You know what? First, let me swear a minute. Uh Kevin, if you could raise your right hand.
I'm ready to go, Jerry.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
So I swear or affirmed. Please say your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Kevin Wilks, W I L K E S. My business address is forty-three Reading Boulevard in Belmead, New Jersey.
Hey, thank you. And if you could go through, go ahead, Ben.
Sure. Kevin, can you uh please provide the board with a brief overview of your credentials and work history?
Pardon me, everyone. I'm a little hoarse and a little sick. Um I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey. I have an undergraduate degree in architecture from Princeton University and a master's degree from Yale University. I taught at New Jersey Institute of Technology School of Architecture as an adjunct from nineteen eighty-six to two thousand and four. I founded Princeton Design Guild in nineteen eighty-five and been continually operating and running this design-build firm in our community since then.
We accept your qualifications, Mr. Mr. Wilks. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise.
Thank you. So uh Kevin, before we get started, um one question that I uh didn't answer in my intro was, you know, why are we here tonight? And the the reason is George and Emily are seeking to attract better tenants for the commercial space. Uh right now, the tenants uh cannot cook, cannot grill, cannot prepare food. So the purpose of this application is to install the exterior exhaust so that they can secure a new tenant for the space that will be able to grill and prepare food at the site. So that's really the main reason why we're here tonight, so that they can secure a a better tenant and cast a wider net of potential tenants in the future for this site. Uh right now, it's a vacant storefront.
That's correct, Ben. However, if it would suit the board, I'd like to explain the code requirements that drove us into this decision-making because this represents a significant investment on behalf of George and Emily. And at first, George wanted me to simply install a hood in the new shop. Well, the problem that we ran into is since this building is so close to the side yard line, you can't exhaust a kitchen exhaust hood directly out the sidewall of a building within ten feet of a neighboring property because that would be essentially offensive to the neighbors to blow kitchen grease and chicken frying uh onto their property. So the code requires that the exhaust of any kitchen hood be located not less than or more than ten feet away from the side yard line. So I said, well, George, we have this problem. We can't, you know, just blow it right out into IVN. I need to be ten feet away from the IVNs, your adjoining or your shared property line. And so I did a little research with George, and we climbed around the building. There's many apartments above this store. Um the building actually has ten units. And at first, you might think, well, why don't you just blast the hood straight up through the building? Um you would cause uh significant damage to two units. You'd have fire rating issues from the residential to the commercial units. We have to have an access to this hood to clean out grease, to this ductwork every six feet, so you'd have to come in through a residential apartment to service this equipment. I said, George, this is not really feasible from your tenant's standpoint for this intrusion. So I proposed the idea that we take the hood out of the side of the building and travel up towards the roof and then place all of the equipment behind the parapet. George has a very low slope, essentially flat roof behind his parapet. And then we could put the equipment up there so I could meet the code of getting the exhaust fumes out of the new hood, ten feet away from uh the ivy, and in fact, uh away from everything on any potential side because it's thirty-five feet up in the air instead of nine feet up in the air blowing out, you know, ostensibly at sidewalk level. We are allowed to take intake air directly from the outside, so you'll see that in my side elevation drawing right over the eastern uh southeasternmost picture window. We're going to take out a window and put in our intake grill for makeup air coming in to supply the hood. But then you'll note in my, what's called side elevation of my drawing, I faced a lot of obstacles about where this duct could run. I couldn't put it near the windows of the apartments above, which you'll see are starting about uh about uh fifteen feet back from the Nassau Street elevation. And then there's remnants of the original gabled structure with cornice and eaves that um are still in place, and you know, they give the building some character and some scale and some understanding of how this building over the years grew, so I didn't want to butcher a lot of that apart and chop it up. So I found a spot where I could come straight out, go straight up in the air, travel straight back onto the roof, and then place the equipment so it does in fact meet the mechanical code requirements for the hood. So that's a lengthy answer to a simple question, Ben, but that's how we got around the block to get this in the location. We placed it up on the roof.
Kevin, what you just showed, um that 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 was a submitted um uh part of this plan set. Was that changed in any way?
Not at all, Jerry. That's in our application submission.
And if you could.
It's my drawing sheet A one hundred, Jerry.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for that explanation, Kevin. That that answers ev- every question. Thanks for that explanation, Kevin. That that answers every question that I had written down to ask. And it's interesting to know there are ten dwellings up above. I did not realize there were that many, and I really do appreciate the care that's been taken to. Avoid affecting them in any adverse way. Are there?
Everything on the roof, Louise, will be on isolation vibration isolation mounts. So there won't be any structural borne transmission to the units below. So we're spending a little extra budget money to make a system that will be. Is non intrusive to residents and neighbors as possible.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Bodigheimer?
Yeah, I mean, maybe premature to ask this question, but I'm just curious if we could get a reminder from staff about what. The applicant is requesting a bulk variance. What are the standards for the board? For evaluating whether a bulk variance of this type can be granted?
I think that's a question for you, Jerry, although it.
Does he cannot have planning testimony? I I mean. It would usually be on the applicant.
Yeah, I mean, it it could be, it's either a C one or a C two. I mean, Justin, I don't know if you want to go through the.
I I take your point, David, and I think it's well taken. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Bridger. Uh, Mr. Nadell, can you address Mr. Cohen's question? Or do you have an expert who can?
So we do not have a professional planner present this evening. Our witness this evening is Kevin, our architect, of course. But as to the bulk variance, given the the minimalist nature of the improvements. You know, we typically would look at what negative impacts would be caused by the granting of the variance. Particularly in this case, the adjacent IVN. I I do note that we did secure, the applicant did secure an easement. From the adjacent property owner. They have consented to the application. They're fully aware. George and Emily have had several discussions with them. So given the nature of the proposal. And again, I'm I'm not an expert. I can't provide expert testimony, just the attorney. But for those reasons, we would submit that the variance being requested is de minimis. And Kevin, by all means, if in in your professional opinion. You feel there are any negative impacts to the adjacent property or the adjacent uses, you could please share those with the board.
Well, I am not a licensed planner, so I have to be careful on whose toes I tread. But the the point I hope to make with our application was that we took all of the. Negative impacts of this potential system that could happen in any food service establishment. And located them away from neighbors, away from residents. You know, and and. Took every effort to disguise the ductwork by painting it the same color as the building. But, you know, I don't want to try to make a specious argument. This is a beautiful. High-tech piece of artwork. This is a mechanical system that is required to operate a food service establishment. And it would be far worse if there were a food stat service establishment that didn't have an appropriate kitchen exhaust.
Right. But I'm just asking the standard that we're asked to. What are the standards for the granting of variance? I mean, there are the standards. I'm not, I don't think any of us are contesting the. Any of those facts. It's just really a question of like, are they relevant to this? To this, to the standard that that the planning board has against which to evaluate them. And that's all I'm asking.
Sure, I I could jump in, Nat, if you'd like. Essentially, what what Derek said about the C variances is that, you know, it's basically, does the positive. You you have to prove that there's a positive reason and also prove that there's not a negative reason through planning testimony.
Okay, great.
What was noted in the application was that the testimony would be provided at the meeting.
Several board members' hands are raised. Ms. Sax and then Mr. Cohen and then Mr. Taylor and Mr. O'Donnell. Mia?
Thanks. I, in terms of, first of all, Kevin, I'm so sorry that you're not well. But thank you for coming in nonetheless. I hope you survive to the end of this. In terms of the positive benefit here, I will just say from the perspective of. Someone who's very involved in trying to promote economic development in our central business district. It can be extremely challenging, given the. Very old nature of the buildings, which we love. We love being a historic town. But it is sometimes challenging to. Make our buildings. Uh, I don't want to say retrofit, but bring them into a functional. Compliance with what we need for where we are now. And Arlie's was great. And but it seems that there's been a real challenge with filling this space since then, which is unfortunate. And if this is is what's needed in order to fill that space. I, you know, my only can, in terms of the negatives, I don't know if we've heard from IVN. But it does seem from your presentation that you've taken great care to minimize. The negative impacts to the neighborhood. We do have Hoagie Haven nearby and other places, which I'm sure emit things. Which are of the nature that they are, so this would not be inconsistent with other. Situations that are happening in this area. I'm not quite sure what what's going on with with the IVN and the food that they produce. But I would say that personally, I. You know, have confidence in Princeton Design Guild and in. Who the applicant has chosen to represent them, that they've done their due diligence to minimize harm. To the. To the to the surrounding area. And in terms of the benefit, I will just say we absolutely do need to fill these spaces on Nassau Street. And if this helps the applicant to fill this space, then that is a benefit that we desperately need as a town. Because we do need commercial ratables. So that's a big picture view beyond just the planning. But that's that's how I view this. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Uh, Mr. Cohen and then Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, thanks. I don't question the importance of being able to provide professional cooking. Facilities to fill this tenant space. I do have some questions about whether the location of the ductwork is optimal. Kevin, I hear what you said about, you know, wanting to avoid the trim work that's up at the gable. But, well, I I guess I have a question before I talk a little bit more about this, which is whether staff has seen. The form of the easement and if not, ask the applicant, you know, is it. An easement for access as well as encroachment? Because it sounded from Kevin's testimony like there would need to be regular. Access from the Ivy and's property to this duck work for maintenance purposes. And so I'd like to hear a little bit about. About the nature of the easement that's been granted and then I I have additional comments after that.
Mr. Nadell, can you answer that question about the easement?
Yes, so the easement that was secured is an air rights easement. And it provides us with the right to occupy the space and to also access the space. The purpose of the easement obviously is to permit the encroachment. But also there is going to be minor maintenance involved once it is installed. But it the easement was negotiated arms length with the Ivy N. We did submit it with the initial application. We knew that in order for this project to succeed, that was going to be a requirement. I believe it was actually a recommendation of your professionals at the very beginning. I know Kevin, before I I came on board, Kevin, I think had two or maybe even three meetings with your professionals. To discuss conceptually the location and the design for this project. It wasn't as if we had just drew something on paper and said, let's try and get this approved. We we've been working on this for almost a year now. I, again, I was not at the pre-meetings, the pre-app meetings, but I know that Kevin was.
So so it sounds like staff has seen the easement and I'm. I guess I'm asking staff now whether you're comfortable with the form of the easement granting the necessary access. And, you know, and that the Ivy and understands that there's, there are going to be regular intrusions on their property. For the maintenance of this rather than just the installation.
I can I can jump in there, Mr. Cohen. And Mr. Muller actually have not been sworn in.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed.
Thank you. We do have the easement is for construction, maintenance and use. As written out in the easement. We have requested that Mr. Muller, look at this, should this be approved as a condition of approval? And we'd be happy to work with Mr. Muller and the applicant to sort out any finer details.
If I may add, the the easement has not been recorded yet. It's been signed. We could record it once it's approved. However, should staff feel that there needs to be an amendment or Mr. Muller feels that there needs to be an amendment. We would agree as a condition of approval to amend that and to seek. A an extra signature from the Ivy and we we don't foresee that being an issue.
Thank you, Mr. Nadell.
So I'll just, you know, make the final comment. And maybe staff should also be addressing this since it sounds like. Staff had several meetings with the applicant in terms of trying to identify the optimal location for this ductwork. But it seems to me, you know, the the way this building relates to the property line is it's sort of zigzags. It doesn't follow the property line. And so there are locations further back from Nassau Street. Where the ductwork could be entirely within the property. And the access season, you know, and the easement wouldn't be required, although I guess there still might be. Requirement for access for the maintenance aspect of it. But, you know, like I said before, I think there are ways to avoid the trim work that's up at the roof level. If that's the main consideration, I think there are ways to avoid the windows of the upstairs apartments. With the run of the ductwork if this duct were further. Back along the property. And I would be more comfortable, especially without anyone from the Ivy N. Here testifying tonight that they fully understand. What the impacts on them are going to be ongoing. You know, I would be more comfortable if the ductwork were on the applicant's property than having a project across the property line. So if staff wants to to respond, you know, how comfortable they feel. That this is really the best place for the ductwork, I'm I'm happy to be corrected.
Um, I can I respond to that?
Please, Mr. Cohen, thanks.
I mean, the ductwork in my. Opinion or estimation is it's set where it is, I think partly by where the system inside the kitchen is. So the location is somewhat controlled by that, but we're happy to look at any. Visit with the applicant onsite and see if there's any alternative locations that might be better suited. And we asked about eliminating the variance, but they didn't seem to think there was a possible location. That the variance could be eliminated. I mean, not the variance, but the. The easement agreement, but easement agreement would be have to be signed by the Ivy N as well. And will be reviewed by our attorney. So I'm sure the the Ivy. The applicant can speak to if they're aware of this agreement. I'm sure they approached him.
Yeah, I mean, they've already testified to that. I'm I'm just not sure that they've testified to the full. Impact of what the easement means. I haven't seen the easement, so I'm, you know, I'm sort of shooting in the dark here. But I will also say that the hood equipment is quite wide. It's sixteen or eighteen feet long. And the duct currently comes out at the front end of the hood. So again, maybe Kevin can talk about if there are technical reasons. Why the duct can't come out at a different spot along the hood. But my understanding is generally, you know, the exhaust could come out anywhere along the hood. And then go up to the roof from there. So Kevin, you can address that i- if if I'm incorrect about that.
Not, you're not incorrect, David. You see the dashed outline of the hood as it would sit inside the store. The the easternmost edge of that is the interior end wall of that space. Anything farther to the east of that is actually. The apartment levels, it's a funky half level issue. The apartments actually drop down six feet. So while there's a tall ceiling in the front, there's a much lower ceiling in the back part of the commercial space. You see the little double hung, the lowest double hung.
You're you're referring to an image that we can't see in it. No, that's all right. I don't mean to, but if there is a way to share.
Can we put A A one hundred up the side elevation?
Thank you.
No, the next sheet.
I'm controlling. We we were supposed to have Kevin in our conference room with us, but due to his not feeling well. We felt it was best for him to stay home. So I'm controlling the exhibits, but Kevin's testifying.
Okay, tha- thank you.
So so David, there's a sectional shift in the building right behind the eastern end of the interior hood location. So I could bring the exhaust duct out along the trunk. That ties into the exhaust that comes up off. The hood's actually going to be broken into two hoods. And have two control systems. So I could bring it out anywhere along there. And then that's where I ran into. Hitting windows above or the cornice above. And I either chop out the cornice or I jog the duct out and create a worse encroachment. Onto the Ivy N to go around the eaves and the brackets. So I felt it was cleanest and simplest to come straight out and shoot straight up. To miss the assemblage of apartment windows, not impact their sight out of the windows. And go straight up and travel onto the roof to the equipment above.
So final comment, just to remind you that because the the wall of the building jobs away from the property line. The further, and you're talking about east-west, I guess. Yeah, so the further west you go. The less encroachment you're going to have on the Ivy. And so even if you did have to jog. to avoid the the trim work, it still would be less of an encroachment or no encroachment at all, not not knowing exactly what the jog would need to be, but.
So, you know, then we'd see a right turn, a left turn, another turn. And this would be higgledy piggledy, traveling up the side of the building. And I felt aesthetically, it would look much cleaner for simply a straight line up that elevation and disappeared across the roof than trying to create compositional meaning out of the remnant double hung windows and awning windows of the bathrooms. The little windows are generally bathroom windows. The double hung windows are generally bedroom windows in this elevation. And I just thought it would be unsightly to try to snake my way through that jigsaw puzzle.
Okay, there are other board members waiting to speak, so.
Yes, thank you. Thank you both. Mr. Taylor and then Mr. O'Donnell and then Ms. Nuka.
Yeah, building on the comments of David Cohen, I'd like to be clearer about the significance of the role of IVN, the neighbor, the significance of the easement. In other words, we have a code provisioned issue which is designed to protect IVN against encroachment or impaired in some negative way. And yet we have an easement agreed to by IVN for the very event and implications that we're discussing. What is the legal weight that the planning board should attach to a neighbor who is the principal beneficiary of the code provisioned issue? Who apparently has reviewed what's to take place and is willing to live with it and indeed confirms that with an easement signed and part of the application? That's what I'd like to clarify. What's the weight, Jerry or Louise, that we should be attaching to the easement and Ivy Inn's position?
Very good question. I'm really skeptical as to whether any weight should be attached to that. You know, we know we get applications for side yard variances, rear yard variances, et cetera. And that a neighbor might not object, it might agree to them. I really don't think there should be much weight. Although although having said that, for Galaxy, for example, which we reviewed recently, we took into account the fact that there were, there was vegetation on neighboring properties that would act as a buffer and that was not going to be eliminated and that the the neighboring property owner did not object. Now, that was a situation where the property in question, which was really derelict, so it was to the neighbor's benefit to to have it demolished and and something new put in. But I'm just skeptical about giving that any weight, but but let me let me ask the Justin, the other staff members what what their feeling is.
Sure. So, you know, the difference here is it's a signed notarized document. You know, the difference to me at least, that the IVN, you know, is agreeable to this, including all the the legality spelled out in there. I think there's something even about that they're not going to put radioactive material in the in the pipe and all that. So I do think to Jack's question, you know, the the most directly affected neighbor has this legally binding document saying that they're, you know, in favor of this. I think that could be considered alongside the what you're also considering for the variance, which again goes back to the positive and negative criteria, seeing that addressed. So I think they kind of go hand in hand. But I I also do think you need to hear from both. Don't let just the Ivy Inn's agreement substitute for, you know, kind of passing the proof test for the variances and vice versa. You know, that that's the advice I would give on this.
I mean, I find it reassuring that that there's a an easement that Ivy in is agreeable to and that they understand, you know, I but I don't mean to be argumentative with with you, Jerry. I mean, I'm just saying that personally, it's good to see. We've seen plenty of applications where neighbors are not happy, you know. And so, you know, when it's business to business, especially, it's it feels reassuring that that there is, you know, that there has been communication and that there is an agreement about something like this. But I'm sorry, there are people waiting to speak. Did you want to say anything before I go to Mr. Mr. O'Donnell? Okay, yeah, I was talking to you, Jerry.
No, I I understand what you're saying. I understand what Justin's saying. I think there's a lot to it. I just think in the long term, maybe at some point the Ivy Inn will be redeveloped. And what's going to be the implications of an easement that they have in place, which affects the nature of that redevelopment? So I I just kept concerns, but I I think you and Justin make legitimate points.
Mr. O'Donnell and then Ms. Nuka and then Mr. Bodigheimer.
Thank you. Have a couple of questions or a couple of comments. Sounds like you've done everything that you can think of to minimize impacts to the residents themselves as well as to the Ivy, if there should be an impact, this, you know, what recourse to, let's say, let's say, the Ivy and this easement have if they're finding that for some reason, the exhaust, you know, instead of blowing straight up in the air, is actually being, you know, somehow directed down by wind currents or et cetera into their courtyard area.
Well, the recourse would not be in any kind of land use context, would not involve any board of the universe of the Princeton. Would really be kind of a a civil suit on a nuisance theory.
Okay, okay, that's good. My other question was regarding the height of the exhaust fan. I believe it's a four foot high exhaust fan. Is that correct? Yeah, okay, thank you, Kevin. Does that, there's a parapet. I'll call it a parapet. I'm not sure if that's the exact architectural term for it at the front of the building. Does does the four foot exhaust fan rise above that? And can the exhaust fan be seen from the street from any angle?
Owen, that's exactly the correct term. Parapet walls to all elevations, side elevations and the street. It's a forty two inch high parapet wall. And that fan will be recessed down in the cavity that is hidden behind the parapets. So I believe all you're going to see is the vertical duct rising up the east face and you won't actually see the equipment on the roof because it'll be tucked down. And your your angle, your angle of perspectival view. I mean, maybe if you got down to Maple and got out some binoculars, you could see it. You certainly aren't going to see it coming out of Small World over the Ivy.
Okay, and I think David has already addressed in great detail some of the other comments that I had and questions, but so thank you very much.
Thanks, Owen. Pallavi Nuka and then Matt Bodigheimer and then Mia Sax. Pallavi, could you activate your camera, please?
Yes, thanks. Thank you. So I think Owen asked one of my questions, which was whether the fan would be visible from the street. The other question I had for both applicants and the staff is whether there was any consideration of running the ductwork on the other side of the building on the driveway side, would it be? Is that at all feasible? Or was that considered at some point and decided that it was not feasible?
I could speak to that.
Go right ahead, Kevin.
Okay, thank you. If you look at the front elevation, you'll see a solitary door to the left of the door that enters the store where Arlie's was previously located. That comes right into a staircase that travels up the building. Imagine a diagonal plane of that staircase going up to the floors above. And we can't bring the ductwork through that staircase because it will chop the staircase off at chest level, preventing people from getting access to the levels above.
All right, I think that answers the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Nat?
No, I thank you, Matt. I'm sure I just wanted to see if I could summarize. We have a variance granting test, which is do we think the benefits outweigh the impacts? I'll just say on the basis of what I've heard, it sounds like yes.
And Nat, let me just lay out a little bit more what the standard is. Is there one or more purposes of the municipal end use law that is advanced? This is for what they call a C two, which is flexible C variance. Do the benefits of granting the variance outweigh the detriments? Is there a substantial detriment to the public, to the to the public good? And are is the intended purpose of the basically the master plan and zoning ordinance substantially detrimental?
Yeah, so having having an activated building and an and an active use there and not a vacant storefront is obviously something that's, you know, because consistent with our master plan goals and the and the public benefit. And the visual impacts, I think we were all grappling with trying to, you know, make sure that the design that's been proposed has minimized them. And I think that I think every every question we've had has suggested that the impacts are minimized. I'm just trying to summarize what I understand. It sounds as well as if from the easement point of view, you know, we obviously have a concern to protect the rights of the adjacent property owner. We have a concern, as you pointed out, that, you know, it might that these might complicate the redevelopment of the of the Ivy Inn in the future. But that's really an agreement between private parties. And in the end, this is something that is between the two parties. And as long as we're satisfied that the owners of the Ivy Inn have been are supportive and understand the implications, I mean, we can't substitute our judgment for them on the granting of the easement. And so, I mean, I think that those are the those are the principal concerns. Have I missed? Is there anything that I've missed there?
I think you've laid them out.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mia Sax and then Claudia Wilson Anderson, no relation. And then Freddie Pearl Mutter. Mia?
To your point, Louise, the legal specificities aside, it is reassuring that Ivy is not here. Complaining about this or putting up some resistance to this because that is, you know, more often than not what we see. And the fact that they're not here is reassuring. And secondly, to Jerry's point about, you know, future redevelopment, while it's not, you know, that's sort of more of the Ivy's responsibility. You know, having been involved in in the creation of the Nassau Street overlay zones and, you know, redevelopment is something that is a priority for the town in terms of the center of the town. And I'm just wondering, Kevin Wilks, if you could speak, are you still here? Yes, Kevin, you're still here. It it would be reassuring to hear from you that your design, which from what I can understand, has taken into account the complexities of of adapting this building to a modern use. But it would be reassuring to hear from you that future redevelopment of the Ivy site, which, as you know, is is not ideal from the town's perspective. It is, you know, in terms of how it's laid out and we would like to see more advanced forms of development and sites like that. It would be reassuring to hear from you that what you're proposing does not preclude a more evolved form of development on the adjacent site.
No, this is, I mean, you should just consider this a piece of mechanical equipment. This thing's going to be bolted on the building, can be unbolted and taken off the building should the tendency change. This is not a permanent architectural roof scape or loggia or ergola. A redevelopment of the Ivy site could someday include some of the Russo's family trust properties. Somebody might come along and make an investment for greater frontage of Nassau Street. And while George and Emily Family Trust Building is, you know, pretty maxed out in terms of of maximum use, it's not to say that combining these parcels together will allow some interesting creativity along the street front and some thinking about the side access off of Chestnut. So I I really want you to suggest you think of this as a replacement of an air conditioning system on a roof, except it's not a replacement. It's a new piece of equipment to make the space usable now. But in no way will it hinder this building or the building next to it to be somehow precluded from doing more important things down the road.
Thanks. Chair Wilson, could I ask slightly out of order, but I I would be very interested to hear Councilman Cohen's response to that. Would that be okay?
Yes, and then and then Claudia and then Freddie. David?
Yeah, so I did raise my hand while you were speaking, Mia, so maybe you knew that I wanted to respond. I have a concern. One of the peculiarities of our zoning or bulk requirements in this zone is that there's a zero foot side yard setback requirement. However, if a side yard is provided, it must be ten feet. And so the concern I have is that if this easement precludes a new building from coming to have a zero foot side yard setback on the Ivy property, that in fact it will have to have a ten foot setback on the Ivy property, which would be a dramatic negative impact on the potential to redevelop the Ivy property. So sure, if what Kevin is saying happens and the two properties are redeveloped together, that would certainly, you know, this this would all go away. But if if that were not to happen, if they were not joined and redeveloped together, I have concerns that there would be a significant negative impact on the potential to redevelop the Ivy property.
Actually, David, the Ivy property would have to respect the front yard setback fifteen feet. So should they build to their maximum zoning envelope, they're still going to miss the duct as presently proposed.
Yeah, that's that's actually a great point, Kevin, although I know that we're looking at extending our prevailing front yard zoning alternative front yard setback to be prevailing front yard setback in commercial zones. We already have that in residential zones. But I we can't rely on potential changes in zoning. So your point is well taken.
Yep. And here I thought this was straightforward. That's really good perspective to to have, though. I appreciate what everybody has raised. Claudia Wilson Anderson and then Freddie Pearl Mutter.
Well, my questions were somewhat addressed by both Mia and David, but I was concerned. And I, since I'm new, I don't know some of the history on this. Have we considered any of the longer term implications that we may face on the planning board due to the approval of the easement variance package? And negative impact setbacks was one of the questions. But are there any other issues that impact us that we may have to go to as a hardship or a redesign because this was granted by us? And then we have to, in the future, face it again.
Well, the general rule, and actually it's been pretty well respected, is that each approval is unique in the sense that a planning board or zoning board is not bound by that in terms of any future approvals. It doesn't, the these prior approvals don't have any presidential, precedential value.
I wasn't really talking about precedent. I was talking about this specific configuration between these two buildings. I wasn't really talking about precedent. I was talking about this specific configuration between these two buildings. And one of the questions David raised was regarding to an easement, uh, and the setback. And that's was one piece of it. Are there any other potential issues that because this, if we were to approve it, that we'd have to deal with somehow on Ivy and and easements was the one that came to mind, but are there other things that we might have to deal with? Uh, in terms of a design of the building that is less than consistent with the nature of uh, the downtown redevelopment or um, anything else. This is not protecting Ivy in right now. It's protecting the vision of the town.
Yeah, yeah. Justin, do you want to comment on that or?
Um, I don't without, you know, getting into kind of the hypotheticals of potential future zoning, either developments on other parcels or zoning changes or anything like that. Um, I, I don't think just the, the facts of this case of, uh, you know, allowing for this, this pipe and this fan that the, you know, uh, most effective property or, or the one that it intrudes on um, to allow for new businesses where the applicant has said, um, they're struggling to retain uh, or recruit businesses, um, because of this reason. I don't think, you know, there, there's nothing that comes to my mind, um, on a grander scale um, in terms of nuisances or anything like that. It, it doesn't appear to be anything uh, outside of what we see within those permitted uses, including the food services, uh, you know, allowed in, in the NB zone and just kind of throughout the, the greater, you know, downtown or, or business, uh, zoned areas.
Okay. Does that, um, address your question? I, my, my only slight discomfort with this and, and some of the other discussion we've had is that there's so much speculation about, you know, what ifs, and I just, and I, while I really appreciate that it, it's important to think that way. I also think that we need to be careful about looking at what's in front of us, um, and not um, you know, veer into issues that, that aren't before us because I don't want you know, for that to come back, uh, and haunt us in some way. I, I don't mean to be cryptic saying that. I just want to, you know, try to keep it between, you know, ke- keep focused on what is actually before us. With the understanding that changes do happen, redevelopment happens, ordinance ordinances change, et cetera. Um, but Claudia, does that, does that answer your question to your satisfaction, what Mr. Muller said and what Mr. Lesko said?
I think my main focus was on the question of the setbacks and I, I think that uh, Kevin answered the question, at least the present setback situation as it relates to the place of the exhaust wouldn't interfere with a setback, uh, with where the pipe is.
Yeah.
In addition to that.
I, I would have to say about this question, the 15 foot front yard setback. If the Ivy was redeveloped, my guess is the staff is going to encourage them to have a similar setback to the other uh, commercial properties along the street. And in fact, if they applied for a variance, I have no doubt it would be granted. Just my reaction, but it is speculative.
Yep. Yeah. Right. Um, Freddie Pearl Mutter and then Alvin McGowan.
Yeah, uh, this, Justin may have touched on this, but when you mentioned the food services, but I like to kind of shift gears a little bit and focus this on some of the other issues, which is, um, smell, odor, uh, noise, vibration with this on the roof. Um, does that, what, what type of, if, if at all, do you anticipate will come from this? And has that influenced where you placed the pipe? Is it, is this going to be going towards the Ivy and will there, will it fall? And, and I don't mean rain physically, but will it come down on the, on the, um, apartments below in terms of, you know, if they open their windows, will there be odors from this, um? If somebody could.
Yeah, Mr., um, Kevin Wilks, maybe you or, or someone else with the applicant can speak to the equipment itself and, you know, odor scrubbers and whatnot. I don't know.
No, no, those are, those very issues you mentioned are the reasons we've gone to these lengths to get the odors out of eye level, nose level, people on the sidewalk and in the um, I guess it's no longer the parking lot, but the front south space in front of the Ivy N. Um, we talked to Richie early on this and we said, here's what we'd like to do. We want to find something that works for you. Uh, so we're not a bad neighbor and do not cause any deleterious effects to your establishment. He's worked really hard to build that place up. He's done quite well in my own opinion. So all of this stuff is going to be on the roof and exhausting uh, up 35 feet above sidewalk level and it's going to travel along with the prevailing winds, which at 35 feet are just a little bit more brisk than they are down at sidewalk level. And they're not going to fall over the building like a bucket of water and enter the windows of the apartments uh, below. They're going to dissipate in the air above and I predict we won't smell much of anything at all.
Has that impacted where you've actually put the, you know, in terms of this easement that we've been talking about, where you've actually put the piping? Or is it?
Yes, ma'am.
Doesn't matter where.
No, no, we, we discussed it with Richie very carefully what he could accept. Um, and you know, this is, is, is far away from his stuff. But, but there's no smells going to come out of the pipe. They're coming out of the termination exhaust fan up centered on the roof. Um, but it was our, I, you know, it was our goal was to also, you know, meet the code and be a good neighbor. I, I'd like to point out that um, my client and Richie are very good friends and have a great relationship and uh, when this, these discussions took place, there was eagerness on both parties to figure out something that works for both sides. Um, so it was our goal to be neighborly.
For those of us who are new, Richie, I take it is Ivy N?
Oh, I'm sorry. He's the owner. He, his family owns the Ivy N.
Okay. Thank you.
That's helpful for those of us who are old also.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions, Ms. Pearl Mutter?
No, that's it.
Okay, thanks. Alvin McGowan and then Julie Capizoli.
Just very quickly, actually Louise, you've, you've already addressed what would be my comment and that's, and that's, I mean, I, I can only deal with what's in front of me. I can only deal with this application. I can't, I can't make any reasonable decision about what may or may not happen in the future. So I, I don't know how, I, I don't see how you can make a decision based on, on that type of unknown. So that was my basic, that's my basic comment. The other things, if conditions change, can an easement be extinguished? Under, under, just generally.
It would have to be with, um, with the agreement of both parties.
Okay.
So, so the answer to that is no, no, it can't unless both parties agree.
Yes. Correct. Correct.
But I, but I'm making an assumption here that if the Ivy N really wanted to make some you know, some change or develop, they could go to, you know, the, the applicants here and see whether they could agree to have the easement extinct, um, extinguished.
Yeah. And as part of that, I mean, if, if they took that route, assumably what they'd want is for the, um, for the then to be, uh, uh, eliminated from their site. The Ivy inside and there'd be no intrusion.
Okay.
A- and there are terms, uh, of, you know, breach of contract and and other sorts of things, uh, you know, I'm not an attorney, obviously. Um, within the easement that was provided, um, and uploaded, um, I, I don't know if Mr. Nadell wants to kind of speak to those to ease the concerns of the board.
So there's, there's two provisions I'd like to highlight, um, in the easement. The first is the term of the easement. Um, so while it is a permanent right, um, the easement, now I'm going to read directly from the easement. This easement shall terminate if the building is demolished or the configuration of the building is changed so as to no longer occupy the airspace easement area. So as to the question as to the term or the permanency of the easement, um, it's not forever. There are things that can change it. The second provision I'd like to highlight is that the agreement can be amended by a written agreement executed by both parties. So there is an option for both property owners to amend the easement. If there is a relocation, uh, in the future, the easement can be amended. Um, and I'll, I'll remind the board, um, you know, the, this easement will be subject to Mr. Muller's review and approval as a condition of the approval. Uh, should the board grant an approval tonight. So i- if Mr. Muller feels that, um, there's additional language that needs to be included to make the board comfortable, um, like I had said earlier, we'll, we'll agree to that condition.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Capizoli?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the, um, the board was familiar with the surrounding, um, businesses. I mean, my sense is that there's a lot of food being cooked in this
Exactly.
general vicinity, that this isn't the only place, like Ivy N cooks food, um, the Hoagie, well, God, Hoagie Haven cooks a lot of food, um, and there's a lot of other places in between that result, they're also cooking. So there's a lot of cooking going on in this block. So just putting that out there, I want, maybe the applicant wants to add to that.
I do. So, um, I'm just going to share my screen again. Just bear with me, please. So, Mr. Muller, if we need to enter this as an exhibit, uh, this is a photograph of PJ's Pancake House. It's located at 154 Nassau Street. I believe it's about a block away from two blocks away from the subject property we're speaking about tonight.
Yeah, and let's mark that virtually as exhibit A1 and Ben, if you could send a hard copy of that to Carrie.
I will. I will do that, uh, after tonight's hearing.
Good. Thank you.
Oh.
And who, who owns the driveway there?
So, I'm not, the reason I'm bringing up this photograph here is, uh, to demonstrate to the board that, you know, what, what's being proposed tonight is not an issue of first impression for Nassau Street. Um, you know, the zoning permits these types of establishments, um, and I'll, I'll ask Kevin, you know, when, when comparing this example two blocks down on Nassau Street to the application tonight, I believe that our exhaust, um, is not visible from the rooftop as compared to what's in front of us. And just to provide the board an example of, you know, what this will look like. Again, this is not a, a perfect example, but if Kevin can just elaborate, how does the rooftop compare to, um, our application?
Well, with all due respect, Ben, I would suggest this is an application, uh, 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 an instance or image of what we are not. This is a two-story building with a flat gabled metal roof with a catwalk on top. It's required by the service access requirements to clean that exhaust fan at the top. Our building is a three-story building with parapet wall that rises up above the roof, conceals the roof and creates a cavity that replaces that metal catwalk. It's perched so precariously on top of PJ's and allows all of that equipment to be serviced from, there's actually an internal stair at the top of the staircase I mentioned earlier that allows access to the roof where service technicians will be able to get up there and maintain the equipment on the roof. The one piece that is comparable is the vertical shaft of exhaust ductwork that comes out there roughly at eight or so feet and travels straight up the building. And that is really all that would be similar to our application. Behind it, you see the makeup air unit tacked on the building. Uh, we have all of that equipment hidden also. And all you're going to see on the outside of our building is one grill that will draw in, they'll, they'll provide entry for the makeup air to the system. So I think ours will look much cleaner than this and isn't really only uh, only sympathetic in terms of concept, but not in execution.
Thanks, Kevin. That's helpful. Did you want to show anything else, Mr. Nadell?
No, I just wanted to add, I, I know there, there's been a lot of, uh, concern this evening regarding the easement. Um, and I just want to reiterate, you know, our, our client negotiated, um, I don't even want to say negotiate easement. He worked with the Ivy N to make sure they were aware of this application and, and what it included. Uh, they were a part of drafting this easement. It's not as if we just asked them to sign it and ran, ran away. Um, they, they consented to the application. They received our public notice, uh, as they're certainly within 200 feet. I, I'm fairly confident that, uh, they would have appeared this evening if there was a concern or if, uh, they were not uh, in line with what's being proposed this evening. Um, this easement has been vetted by legal counsel. It, it'll be vetted again by Mr. Muller. Um, so, you know, I, I know that we've had a lot of discussions tonight regarding the easement, but I do want to highlight to the board that uh, the applicant went to great lengths to, uh, secure the neighbor's approval, if you will, uh, of this project.
Okay, thanks. Well, we, we haven't heard public comment yet, so it's it's possible somebody is here from next door, you know, fingers crossed. Um, Mr. Bodigheimer?
Uh, no, uh, I, well, the question I was going to ask is what do we need to do before we can make a motion? And of course, hearing from the public is, uh, is one of those things that we have to do, but I, I so I'll just take my hand down.
Okay. Any other questions for, for the applicant before we hear from the public? Okay. Not seeing any questions. So I'll open the, the meeting for public comment. Any members of the public who want to address the board on this application should virtually raise your hand. Right now we have seven attendees, um, watching the proceedings. I don't see any hands going up. So I'll ask again, any, any members of the public who want to address the board um, about this application, please raise your hand. I am not seeing any hands raised, so I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting and, um, ask for any um, final thoughts, questions, comments, Mr. Cohen and then Mr. O'Donnell.
Yeah, so, um, uh, the attorney is correct. I think, you know, my concerns really boiled down to concerns about the easement. Um, I'm, I'm pretty convinced by uh, Kevin's testimony regarding the, the optimal location for the ductwork. But I would just like to propose as a condition that the easement should be really clear about the area that will be needed for access in addition to the encroachment easement. This goes back to the question I was asking at the beginning. So I don't know what needs to happen to maintain this ductwork on the outside of the building. But I assume there's some kind of a vehicle that might need to drive onto, or maybe not. Maybe it's just a ladder that gets put up next to the ductwork. Um, I, I just don't know, but I think that it should be addressed in the easement. So there should be some kind of a plan, you know, with a dotted line showing what part of the Ivy property the uh, the owner of this property is, has a right to occupy when they're accessing the ductwork for the needed maintenance. And it should also talk about the frequency, how often the doctor will be accessed for, um, for maintenance. Is it twice a year? Is it every three years? I, I don't know what the I, I don't know what the requirements are, but they should be incorporated, I think, into the easement. And if those things can be incorporated to easement, I'm satisfied to, um, you know, uh, move approval of the application with that condition.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes, thank you. I, I agree with David that I think the jury should consider, uh, adding those, uh, those comments, David's comments, uh, into, uh, to a, a resolution, um, and working. And of course, the easement has to go through Jerry's office as well. So I think that that will, he'll, he'll be able to flag anything, uh, that just, you know, seems to be, that could be made stronger, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Um, and also I, I also agree with Alvin that we can't really make a decision based on what ifs and possibilities down the future. Um, so I think that, uh, should this, uh, go through, I look forward to, uh, to eating at another establishment along Nassau Street.
Mr. Um, Bodigheimer?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to see if I could, um, summarize what I think basically Alvin O'Donnell and Councilman Cohen said was where did Jerry, please strengthen the, the, the condition of approval related to the easement if possible? And I was wondering if A, that fortune cookie style summary is correct and B, if it is, could we get Jerry Miller to, uh, to, to share with us the language that he would propose, um, to be that condition before we have a motion to approve?
I can, I can certainly go over my notes as to, uh, the various suggestions that were made, more than suggestions, I, I kind of tr- treated them as, as directives. Um, do you want me to do that right now, uh?
Yes.
Okay, so, so I have the following conditions. The easement is subject to my approval. The applicant will amend it as per staff request. The easement must permit access to maintenance and that includes how often, the area that would be subject to the access portion of the easement and how often maintenance would occur. And that's really basically it. And obviously the other part of the relief would be the grant of the, uh, front yard variance.
Mm-hmm.
A- and the, uh, the discipline, my discipline.
Right. Okay, well, I think, um, I think I heard David halfway make a motion for saying he would be willing to.
Move approval with that condition.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bodigheimer. Um, any other discussion or questions before we vote? Um, Ms. Philip, will you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Mr. Bodigheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Well, thank you, everybody. I especially want to thank the Russos, um, for working with your neighbors. Um, and thank you, Mr. Wilks, for, um, your expertise and showing up even though you're obviously so far under the weather. I'm really sorry you had to spend your Thursday night this way. Um, but the attention paid, you know, to uh, avoiding adverse impacts on the folks who live upstairs, um, as well as everything else we've discussed is just, um, really good to see. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep. Anything else? Any other business?
Thank you. We wish everyone a happy and healthy New Year.
Thank you very much. And good luck with your project. Good luck moving ahead. Um,
We'll work with Jerry.
Good, perfect.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David, are we, are we gonna go through into 24 with, with you holding the same?
If no one objects.
Yes, please.
David, don't complicate it. Just make the motion.
I'm the one that complicates.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you both. All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Um, see you in two weeks.
Okay, thank you, Louise.
Thanks again. Good night.
Good night.
Night.